Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order this the January fifteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. As always, we begin with an invocation. If y'all will all pray with me, please. Now, Heavenly Father, we thank you for many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day. A special blessing on this board, as well as other boards throughout this state and this great country, as they make decisions on behalf of their citizens. Another special blessing for our first responders, those in this room, as well as throughout the area, is they put their life on the line on a daily basis to protect us and care for us in those times of need. We ask these seniors in Jesus Christ's name to pray. Amen. Public comments. Sheriff, I believe it's your call. Or somebody. Or Mr. Slay. All right, Mr. Slay?
The sheriff called that, so it's mine. All the time, guys, we get an opportunity to pay special recognition to men and women in law enforcement who go above and beyond the call of duty. And today is one of those days, and it gives me great, a great pleasure and a privilege to recognize Deputy Hunter Elbert. Please come forward. This is, this is one of our fine men of law enforcement right here, gentlemen. One of our esteemed deputies, among many. I don't want to leave the guys who work alongside Hunter out of this discussion. We are recognizing Hunter, but at the same time, we're recognizing all of the men and women of law enforcement in Rankin County. And it just so happens that Hunter gets to be the representative today because what he has done and the reason that we're recognizing him in service to the citizens of the county is something that each and every one of our law enforcement officers would do if, if the occasion presented itself to them as well. And so, without further ado, I want to read a resolution of the Board of Supervisors that's commending and congratulating the Rankin County Sheriff's Office and Deputy Hunter Elbert for bravery in service to house fire victims. Whereas, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has consistently recognized our county's law enforcement, under the direction of Sheriff Brian Bailey, as a vital component of what makes Rankin County a desirable and safe place to live and raise a family. And whereas, the Rankin County Sheriff's Department has been a consistent partner with the Rankin County Board of Supervisors in serving and protecting the citizens of Rankin County. Whereas, in recognizing the importance of Sheriff Bailey, the leaders of the Sheriff's Department and the men and women who form the department, the Rankin County Board of Supervisor also recognizes extraordinary and heroic acts of individual officers, among them Deputy Hunter Elbert, whose training, instincts, quick thinking, and heroism resulted in saved lives and the protection of property. Whereas, on December the twenty-second, 2018, three days before Christmas Day, Deputy Elbert was on a routine patrol in the Robin and subdivision, and he spotted the telltale signs of a house fire. Deputy Elbert's training took over, and he moved quickly to ascertain the status of the occupants of the house. He noted two small children close to the house, and he moved them to safety. He entered the home, and he located a male resident near the entry who was attempting to exit the home, and reported that another resident, a female, was still in the structure. Deputy Elbert quickly surveyed the situation, and he searched for the female occupant despite the danger. Deputy Elbert successfully located the female resident and assisted her in safely exiting the burning house. With little fault to his own safety, Deputy Elbert had the presence of mind to gather up most of the Christmas presents located in the house and remove the gifts, thereby preserving a small part of the family's Christmas celebration. Now, therefore being resolved, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors congratulates and commends the Rankin County Sheriff, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and especially Deputy Hunter Elbert for their dedicated service to the citizens of Rankin County. Deputy Elbert is a classic example of the quality of men and women selected by our sheriff and his leadership to serve and protect our citizens each and every day. Their willingness to place themselves in harm's way or to answer the call in emergency situations makes Rankin County a safer and more desirable place to live, work, and raise our families. And that's resolved today, the fifteenth day of January, 2019, signed by its supervisors deputy. And along with our Chancery clerk, we want to present you with this original resolution. We want to say thank you for your service to the citizens of Rankin County. And I know you join with your brothers and sisters in law enforcement, and thank the Board of Supervisors for providing what you guys need to do your job. Congratulations to you.
I got one question. Y'all what district you from?
Proud of you. Proud of you. Now, tell them what district you want to move to.
I was gonna say this, too. Y'all, we couldn't do the thing, we wouldn't be worth anything without this board of supervisors. And they really support us. They, I mean, seriously, the equipment, the quality of people wearing behind, it was directly back to this board of supervisors. And even though in the support of Laura, the board staff, and everybody, they always worked together in Rankin County, so it makes us agree. But, of course, supervisors, we thank y'all.
Do we get a picture of you and him? Come on. Your dad, please come forward. Get a picture of everybody.
Okay, let them go.
Let them.
What's it right here, y'all? What is your stand behind?
Hey, Hunter, you know what makes me feel good? So many of my buddies over here have tried to get into the fire academy for so long, and they can't score high enough on the test, but I think you could do it. I think you got it. That's right, that's right.
Don't worry about that. That was a good one.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We have the law enforcement guy.
Everybody, Sheriff, just go and take a knee around the.
Take a knee? I like it. Hey!
Take a knee?
Can I get a couple pictures with Barry Volansy? Do you mind, Sheriff? Barry Volansy, I need a couple wallets. Either one, either one's good.
I don't think we're gonna be seen. Come on in here. I'm gonna have to stand up in my chair.
I'm gonna get up on the table.
I'm not. No.
Somebody else can come up here, just slide in this way, from the side. A little bite.
Can I get a wide angle?
No, I don't. You get up in a chair.
Everybody turn right.
That's one for the ladies there, huh? Yeah. Yeah.
Y'all don't have to leave that, you don't want to. Just getting ready to get started.
Good morning, sir. You doing all right, bro?
As there are motions, are any other public comments, gentlemen?
For sure.
Anything else after anybody wants to say before we move on? There are motions to approve of all minutes. Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All like sign. Motion carries. All right, boys, that was kind of waking up this moving consent agenda.
Same way.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Fortenberry?
Here, let me, let me get that for y'all. Let me get it.
We had a Mr. Roy Nichols that came and applied for two privileged license, application for fireworks stand. He only opened one, and he's requesting authority to get a reimbursement for the other.
Motion to approve by myself. Second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fortenberry. You gonna take care of Mr. Solomon, too, while you up there?
Have petitions for change of assessment on the 2018 real and personal property assessment roll.
That's Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, please, ma'am.
Request to void the 2017 tax assessment for parcel number F-241, PIN number 12710, and N-9Q311, PIN 45872. The aforementioned parcel was reverted to the Rankin County School District on May fifteenth, 2017.
Motion approved. Motion, Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fortenberry. Anything else?
Thank you.
Mr. Slay, you coming up for?
While Ms. Fortenberry's handy, can I redirect us, our attention back to the prior board meeting? We mentioned that our hearing officer for waste management is now our Chancery judge, and so we need a hearing officer. The discussion sort of was that we needed to inquire of Ms. Judy, get her feedback, and she has to work, she and her department has to work most closely with the hearing officer to conduct those. And so, while she's here, my hope was that we could have a further discussion about that. This may not be the time y'all want to talk about that, but my thought is, let's go ahead and see if we can't address that issue.
Yep. You got somebody?
Well, it's, it's most important for those people trying to get car tags, of course, you know, when their car tags expired and they've got a delinquent garbage bill. I don't have the authority to let them get it until it's paid. I think Troy had mentioned to some of you a person that he suggested, which is fine with me. I figured he knew, you know, the quality of the person better than I did, so.
Who is it?
I know her also. I know her, and she's quality. But I don't know that that's the only quality person.
Right. And I don't either.
You have to work with them, so I'm all.
I mean, I know her, that's like Steve. I don't know, you gotta work with her.
I can work with anybody, that's the point, but.
Well, you don't have, yeah, I guess since you don't have that much longer, you have to work with them.
Oh, man.
She's retiring.
That's true.
Yes.
Who is it?
Well, you know that well, huh?
The lady that ran against Troy.
Tamika?
Tamika.
I'm trying to think of her last name.
Bennett. She was a candidate for Chancery.
That's all, we just want to make sure somebody you're good with.
Probably not.
Well, I don't think we need, does she know what the pay is?
Oh, well, I don't.
I mean, we probably shouldn't vote to hire her until we talk to her.
Well, let's talk to her.
You can offer, you can vote to offer.
Let's, let's, let's talk. Let Judy talk to her.
What you guys will be doing is simply, is simply acknowledging that your former hearing officer has given you a recommendation on who his replacement, in his opinion, should be. I would like to see is some sort of affirmative statement out to you guys that y'all want that discussion to move forward with her, and then at the next board meeting, we'll bring you a recommendation.
I don't have a problem with going talking to her, seeing if she's interested.
If there are others that you would like for us to speak to, then please get the names to us.
I've met her a couple times, and I don't have to.
No, I mean, you got anybody else?
I make a motion that we do what Craig said.
Well, y'all really need a, I don't think we need a motion for that, but I do encourage the board to visit with Judy the next day or two if there's somebody else you'd like to make a phone call to, or Mr. Slay here, and then reach out, and then we need to get a consensus by the fifty, the thirty-first. This does not need to drag on at all, because she needs to get tagged, people want tags.
And if you got somebody else you know, anybody, you know, we, we have them talk to them.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Fortenberry. Ms. Bridget? You don't have to leave, Ms. Fortenberry.
I know, but I.
Can't do it anywhere.
He's Tuesday.
Good morning. I have one item this morning. I'm requesting approval of a copier contract with Southern duplicating for the county prosecutor's office.
Motion approved.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
Good job, Bridget. Good job.
Morning. Oh, I need to request a finding for the work and expense necessary for repair of a storm drain located at 267 East Pine Brook Drive, East Pine, Pine Brook Drive, and the necessary of it.
Where is Pine Brook Drive? What area is this in?
It's in District Number Two.
It's in District Two.
Off Hewer Boulevard. The problem we've gotten right here is that the storm drain has totally collapsed on us, and water can't get into it, and it's covering up our roadway, so we're gonna go and try to fix that box out.
Thirty-foot, we got to repair.
Where, where?
No motion.
Was it like up in a yard or something?
Yes, sir.
Motion, Mr. Cross, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, following, favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, if there's something else. Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Come on up.
All right. Then I have two items on the agenda today. The first one is our overall drainage improvement project, and I'm making a recommendation to approve the pay application number five in the amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty-four cents to JWB Construction Incorporated.
Do we want to get an update on that, Jay, or you want?
Yeah, we met with him yesterday, and unfortunately, it's really no resolution, in my opinion. It's kind of a waste of meeting, but.
You may well.
They never told me. Bishop's about to schedule.
Yeah, but, you know, the guy came in, didn't bring his attorney with him, and.
Did he?
Did not.
Okay.
But basically, his attorney realized that there was nothing, no reason for him to be there, but actually, he could have been, we could have resolved it, but we left it. Craig's supposed to get with his attorney, 'cause the guy feels like, since we went on the scene and removed the pipe out of the road, that we invaded his workspace and all.
When you say remove the pipe out, you're talking about damaged pipe that had been thrown out of the ground?
Right, right, yeah.
That was in the road.
In the road, yes. And that his employees are, feel, you know, scared to come back here to work, or.
I don't want to pay him eighty-one thousand.
I'm scared to pay him any more money.
I hear the deal, though.
Just all scared, I guess.
We need to get off center. I'm ready for us to do something one way or the other.
Me, too.
What's the, what's the option, then?
Well, I think our option is this. Craig's gonna talk to his attorney and get him relaxed enough to come up here to work. At that point in time, we still got to decide how many days they're gonna get or whatnot, but basically, the rest of the work is to be done, it's not gonna be him, it's gonna be a concrete company.
How much have we already paid him? Seven hundred thousand?
No, no. Not that much.
How much? How much have we paid, Mr. Buster?
He's still got over half the project.
It's in the, it's in the half million.
Paying five hundred thousand.
What's half of?
This doesn't include the eighty-one that's on the paper, right, here, guys?
It's on the half of.
That's all right, yeah, that's okay. Half a million, all right.
This is just totally off the top of my head, just on the numbers that I've seen. Jay has summed it up, I think, adequately. I may have a slightly more optimistic outlook than Jay does about getting it resolved. My observation from the meeting yesterday, since Jay brought his lawyer, is that we're probably dealing with issues that go way beyond this particular project, and that this particular project is being hampered by other issues that are affecting this particular contractor. Hopefully, y'all can sort of read between the lines there. This particular pay application and request is probably a very critical part of the contractor being able to fulfill his obligation under this agreement that we have in place, and our engineers, I think, have got us in a position where we can limit further exposure to the situation that developed. Okay? So, this whole thing erupted because the, the manner in which this particular contract was carried out by this contractor and the conditions that were encountered were, the only way I know to put it, is as bad as I've ever seen. It's terrible. The, the conditions are bad, and the way that the, the way that the site was handled by the contractor was bad, and the people out there have suffered, and it put us in a terrible position to try to accommodate constituents. I mean, they can't get into the driveways, they can't get their mail, there's pipe blocking the entirety of the road, there's no way, nowhere for them to park anywhere close to their houses, and, and we're, we're days away from Christmas. I mean, what else are we supposed to do? And so, the reason that I have at least a little bit of optimism is that this fellow at least acknowledged that that was sort of a trifecta of bad outcomes and circumstances that he had to deal with. And so, I'm at least hopeful that as we maybe get a little bit better, better weather, and we reduce down the scope of the project, and we don't require, as the finished work of this project, we still got a good bit to go, but we don't require significant excavation, I think we will be in a much better position. In other words, he's gonna have to sub out the rest of this work for somebody else, and it's not gonna be his crews that are actually out there. All right, so I feel a little bit better about it, and I, I think, knowing his lawyer like I know him, I think we're, we're at least in a position to have good conversations that, that get to the bottom line and avoid all the who's responsible for what and who's, who's liable for what and all that other kind of stuff. It's not gonna suit anybody's privacy.
I just hate to see us paying more money when we've already paid him half a million dollars to destroy it.
More than a half, it's, it's much more than a half million.
Janet's with the five thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
So, it's eight hundred, so I missed it.
No, it's a little over eight and a fourth.
All right, so it's eight hundred, I missed it, I was at seven.
So, we're nearly nine.
I feel worse than I did at seven hundred thousand.
And the only one point two, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not giving him any more money, me. I mean, I just, until we get some kind of relief to those residents, I'm not.
It's Jay's district, and I'm gonna go with him, but Mike and Bridget, if his name ever comes up on a contract in my district, let me talk to him first, 'cause we ain't doing it.
This is, this is awful.
That's your call, man, we willing, what, do what you want to do.
Well, I mean, there's no win here.
I know there's no win.
If we vote not to pay it, he ain't sure ain't coming back to work, and.
When is the last time he was at work?
Uh, the day we went out there to pick up the pipe.
Like, a few days before Christmas, like, or something?
Yeah.
All right, so I guess my thing is, if we pay him eighty-two thousand dollars right now, what is that for?
Probably most of it's for his pipe that.
His attorney fees.
All right, but I guess my thing is, if he doesn't go, let's just say he takes the eighty-one thousand, says, well, I tell you what, I got the eighty-two thousand now more for him, you guys? I'm still not gonna do anything. What do we do then?
Call the bond.
I have another question, too, is, what if, can he, can he get the work, the rest of the work done with what's left in the contract, Buster? Do you think that's, that's enough money there to finish the job?
Can somebody tell?
Can he sub it? Can he sub it, and still, he won't make anything profit?
Keep in mind how a bond works, guys. It, it, it does not provide the money to finish the project.
We've been down that road.
It simply protects the work, it's a performance function, all right, bond? So, what that means is, the bonding company will take control of the project and will contract with a third party to do the rest of the work on the contract. That's how that works. And what our experience in the past has been is that the bonding company will oftentimes go right back to the same contractor and contract again with the same contractor to finish the work.
We've been down that road, same, that's what happened.
They're already neck deep in the project. Second thing, the eighty-one is trimmed down, probably close to half of what he requested, so it's already been whittled down substantially. It includes the pipe, yes, the pipe that was ordered, it's got, that's already been installed, that's he's being paid for. It also includes reimbursements that he's entitled to because utility companies lay utilities on top of the pipe. So, as he's excavating, he's discovering gas lines, cable lines, AT&amp;T infrastructure, he's discovering all that's right in his workspace and right on top of the pipe. Okay? So, some of what he's being paid for, he's entitled to under the contract, and is, is an example of some of what has created the issues that we find on this site that neither we nor he could anticipate beforehand. That infrastructure was not supposed to be there.
But he didn't come back and let us know that?
Well, I, I don't know.
That I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't know, well, I think it's, I think it's included in some of the reporting that's on the project, but, but I don't know that you and I, I don't know that the board has actually addressed that.
Buster, what does the eight hundred thousand we've already paid him cover? You know?
Little more than half of the project.
It's to cover the pipe and the.
I thought that's what this other eighty thousand was for. I mean, I'm just saying, it's not like we hadn't paid the guy anything. Paid him eight hundred, eight hundred thousand.
We've done, Grove has been lined already.
The eighty-one thousand is, I believe it's some forty-eight inch pipe that he laid this last pay period, and so the eighty-one thousand covers pipe that was actually installed in this last, since the last pass.
I just think eight hundred thousand's enough to keep us moving in the job, I would think. And it's only, what, one point three, one point four? What is it? One point four?
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of going ahead and taking, we'll, we'll put it off on Mr. Slay, we'll throw him under the bus, and it's going south, but let's go with Mr. Slay's recommendation, go ahead and see if we can't move forward with him, and I'll see, I'd like to, I don't see another way it's gonna get any better, so I'm, I mean, I'll second, somebody make the motion, did you make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, do it.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second by myself, to pay it, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
No.
Three, two vote, Mr. Cross and Mr. Gaines are opposition. Motion carries. Thank you. You got one more, Ms. Parker?
Amen.
Second, I have one with the Hollywood Road Improvement Project. We recommend approval of pay application number eight in the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars, sixty-five cents.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Aye, please, sir.
This is to set a public hearing for a report on a local area. I think it was a provision to use permanent, it didn't run through this business.
I make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Slay, Jay?
Jay, it's a public, this is a, a public hearing on the Community Place Nursing Home. I, I know that there are representatives of the Community Place Nursing Home present. I see Mr. G P, I see Mark Mallard, and we have representatives from the nonprofit, the operators. Okay, very good, thank, I appreciate you guys being present. And so, this will be a public hearing on the variance request that has been applied for by Community Place Nursing Home. They're seeking a twenty-foot variance from the required forty-foot front setback at sixteen Lake Vista Place. They were approved for a conditional use permit to construct a sixty-bed skilled nursing home in December of 2016. This is a six point three eight acres. The property is currently Zone C two. The heated and cooled square footage for the proposed building is forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one feet. Again, it's a twenty-foot variance from the forty-foot front setback, and this is a cul-de-sac, you guys will recall, so there's a corner of the building that would encroach within that forty-foot front setback requirement. It's outside the right way, obviously, but it's, it's within the. So, I'll, I'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Community Place Nursing Home. I'll start with that. Is anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? As far as I know, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. If the board has any questions or wishes to hear any testimony at all from Community Place, we can do that now?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple comments on it. I went out and looked at the place, and your renderings and your drawings and all look really great, and I appreciate the, the attention to detail you've placed on the community and the concerns that you've got out there. And I've had no calls in opposition by any means of the, of the nursing home going there. So, I appreciate you guys coming in, and I appreciate you working with the fire department on the fire codes, along with our community development office on the same side of that. You guys have been upfront on the whole thing, and we really appreciate your, your effort and hard work on putting this thing in for us. So, all good on, on our side on that. Three, two vote, Mr. Cross and Mr. Gaines are opposition. Motion carries, thank you.
I'm ready to kick him out of the county.
Amen.
Second item that I have on is the Holly Bush Road Improvement Project. We recommend approval of payout application number eight in amount of two hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars, sixty-five cents.
Some of.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
They've been working since Christmas.
Don't you knock those out while I go.
Motion carries, alright, thank you, Mr. Parker.
There's been some work.
Mr. Slay, I think we can take A through, looks like, uh, H together, is that alright? Gentlemen, do y'all have any problems setting A through H at one time? Jay?
What?
Steve, any problems setting A through H at one time?
Good.
Thanks.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries, aye please, sir.
This is the set of public hearing report, not in lockers here, I think it was permission to use permanent, it didn't rank through this bit more than.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries, alright, Mr. Slay, Jay.
Jay is a public, uh, this is a, a public hearing on the Community Place Nursing Home. I, I know that there are representatives of the Community Place Nursing Home present, I see Mr. G P, I see Mark Mallard. Uh, we have representatives from the, the nonprofit, the operators, citizens. Okay, very good, I appreciate you guys being present. And so this will be a public hearing on the variance request that has been applied for by Community Place Nursing Home. They're seeking a twenty-foot variance from the required forty-foot front setback at sixteen Lake Vista Place. Uh, they were approved for a conditional use permit to construct a sixty-bed skilled nursing home in December of twenty sixteen. This is a six point three eight acres. Uh, the property is currently zone C two. Uh, the heated and cooled square footage for the proposed building is forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one feet. Again, it's a twenty-foot variance from the forty-foot front setback. And this is a cul-de-sac, you guys will recall, so there's a corner of the building that would encroach within that, uh, forty-foot front setback requirement. Um, it's outside the right way, obviously, but it's, it's within the center. So I, I'll open that public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Community Place Nursing Home. Start with that, is anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? As president, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. If the board has any questions, uh, or wishes to hear any testimony at all from Community Place, we can do that now.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on it. I went out and looked at the place and your renderings and your drawings and all looked really great. And I appreciate the, uh, the attention to detail you've placed on the community and the concerns that you've got out there. And I've had no calls in opposition by any means of the, of the, uh, the nursing home going there. So I appreciate you guys coming in, I appreciate you working with the fire department on the fire codes, along with our community development office on the same side of that. You guys have been upfront on the whole thing and, and we really appreciate your, your effort and hard work on putting this thing in for us. So, uh, all good on, on our side on that.
Mr. G, do you need to put anything in the record at all, or are you satisfied to stand on the application?
I think we can stand on the application, thank you.
Uh, with that, uh, we'll close that public hearing, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries. Thank you, folks, for coming, Mr. Slay, yep.
Are we gonna approve the final construction plans on the reverse?
Well, the guys are reviewing the construction plans, but, um, the site plan and everything, the renderings, all that was approved in this. We presented all that at one time to the board.
Architecture side too? Every time I have?
It was done.
I think so, yes.
In conjunction with the variance, cause we had all the information there for y'all to see.
Very good.
The renderings.
Just to make sure I'm clear today, so, once we get Mr. Parker them satisfied with the few engineering comments we've got, will we be ready for them to apply for a permit yet?
Uh, yes, you know, once the guys finish reviewing the plans and get y'all to go ahead on that, yes.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Bye, Mr. Slay.
A long time in the works.
That's gonna be nice, save me a room, I may need it soon.
We hope we get a building.
Mr. President, item K is the public hearing on the Robert Hobson Jr. Conditional Use Permit, five thirty-nine Baker Lane, District Four. Mr. Hobson is seeking a conditional use permit to place a nineteen ninety-five sixteen by seventy-six manufactured home at five thirty-nine Baker Lane. The property is titled in his father's name, Robert A. Hobson Estate. Uh, this is a three point five six acre parcel zone, R E one. There's an old house on the property that burned several years ago. We'll open that public hearing, uh, and I'll, uh, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Robert Hobson Jr. Conditional Use Permit Request, anyone? As president, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Renee, they did, they cleaned that home up that burned, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
They've done some, yeah, I, I make a motion that we approve it, sorry.
A quick question before we move into that direction, hey, Renee, is, is city of Richland, don't they have an ordinance of that, a certain age? You can't go a certain age with a mobile home, bring it on, on site?
We do too.
We do too.
The city may not, we don't have.
What is ours?
We, we don't have an ordinance, our policy is if they're older than, uh, fifteen years, we're gonna look at them if they're in the county where we can go look at them before they're moved, just to make sure there's, you know, look at safety issues, that kinda thing. Um, and see if they are livable, um.
Do we, I mean, do you actually address fire safety, health issues, I mean, for making them upgrade anything in particular? I know it's hard sometimes, that pre, pre, prefab structure to do anything else, you know, but.
If, if we see an issue, yeah, they'll have to fix it, um, you know, if we let them move it, um, they would have to fix it, so.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, who made the second?
Ready.
Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slay.
This is item L, a public hearing on the S and P Enterprises Inc., Duncan Marine, Conditional Use Permit, sixty-six ninety-four Highway twenty-five, District Two, property. Uh, S and P Enterprises Inc., Duncan Marine is seeking a conditional use permit for open storage of boats and RVs at sixty-six ninety-four Highway twenty-five. The open storage area will be approximately twenty-five thousand square feet located to the north of the existing building. The applicant is also seeking approval of a future open storage area to the rear of the existing building, that's approximately ninety-two thousand square feet. The twenty-five thousand square foot open storage area will have limited visibility from Highway twenty-five. Uh, due to a heavily wooded property line that runs north and, uh, to, to the north and to the west. Uh, the future open storage in the rear will not be visible from Highway twenty-five. So the applicant is proposing a crushed limestone surface for both open storage areas. This is a ten acre parcel, it's zone C two. Uh, we'll open that public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the S and P Enterprises Inc., Duncan Marine Conditional Use Permit Request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? As president, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, I just, yes, sir, I just wanna make one, uh, comment on it, and we discussed this, I know with Dwayne and also with Mr. Hobson on the same side of, that the property behind this, that butts up to Scottish Hills subdivision in that area. There's a pipeline company that owns it directly on the north side of that property, that we, we have a buffer line right now, trees and, and growth that shields us between the two, that. And I think Dwayne mentioned to me earlier that we already had it in an original agreement, but I just wanted to kinda reemphasize it, that for some reason, if that area is cut and the buffer line's not there, that we would establish some type of barrier between, uh, your property and the subdivision side of that, you know? Um, if they were to come in and clear cut that area and there are no trees, it was directly visible to the back of the subdivision, that would create some kinda buffer between the, your property and where the subdivision would fall. Uh, I believe that was already in the original agreement of the, uh, the first boating area that we have out there, so.
It's required by the ordinance that if it goes away, the more intense use has to put it back.
Okay, I just wanna be sure Mr. Hobson was good with that on the same side and to address the lighting issue, didn't change, so.
Is this directly north? I mean, so which means?
Well, it's kinda more northwest, I would think.
The subdivision is to the, is to the west.
But I mean, this is gonna be more viewable from Highway twenty-five.
You won't be able to see.
You won't be able to see it either way.
It's back behind it. And there's, and there's, and there's ample tree barriers between the side of it. And he's already got a, a really nice storage area on the side of it right now, it's just extended it to the back, so I'm good with it and, and the area's good with it, I just wanna mention that one thing. I appreciate your hospitality and showing us, uh, letting us look at it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Cross, are we, that's already in the ordinance, right, Mr. Slay, so there's no reason, okay. Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slay.
Yes, item M is a public hearing for Heather Power. She's requesting a conditional use permit at two nineteen Oak Creek Circle in District Four property. The power is seeking a conditional use permit to place a sixteen by eighty manufactured home as a second dwelling at two nineteen Oak Creek Circle. She's purchased a home and doesn't know, uh, does not know, uh, the year model of the home. The power owns a fifteen acre parcel, zone A two. The master home will be for her mother. So at this time, I'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Heather Power Conditional Use Permit Request, anyone? Mr. Slay, what's the, what's the deal on the, doesn't know the year?
They haven't purchased a home yet, so she knows what size she wants to, to get, but she doesn't know your model at this time.
Oh, I'll make a motion as long as it conforms to their regulations.
Yes, contingent upon, uh, the community development office being satisfied with the condition of.
Yep.
You close the hearing?
Uh, I am now, thank you.
Uh, motion by Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slay.
Yes, item N is a public hearing for H S C Florence LLC, it's a conditional use permit request, fifteen hundred Highway four sixty-nine South, District One. Uh, H S C Florence LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a nine thousand one hundred thirty-three dollar general store at fifteen hundred Highway four sixty-nine South. They're purchasing one point six oh acres out of an eight point five oh acre parcel. The property is zone A one, they propose architectural split-faced block on the front of the building. The sides and the rear of the buildings will be pre-finished metal wall panels. All paved areas will be concrete, there will be a six-foot privacy fence as required for screening purposes. At this time, I'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the H S C Florence LLC Conditional Use Permit Request, anyone? As president, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Uh, at this time, it'd be appropriate to discuss and take action.
We've, uh, I spoke to them in depth yesterday and, uh, Renee did also, uh, we want the split brick on the sides, uh, same as the front. Um, so, um, at this point, basically what we're gonna do, approve it contingent on them going that way. And the reason for that, Renee, um, direction, we won't have to start a public hearing over again. So we're just gonna approve it, and, and they know it's, that's the only way it's gonna get approved.
Gotcha.
So, basically, until they, what they, what they wanna do is go back to their, I say, I think their owner, or, and get that approved, change some of the pricing in the contract and, you know, with that type of things, it's just a paperwork and dollar. Not to say that he says, no, I don't wanna do it, but anyway.
But it, it, it's gonna be one of those, if it, if brick or split block.
And just so you, just so y'all all would know, I didn't realize this, and, uh, Renee and, uh, Dwayne went out and checked, every one we have throughout the county is built the same way. With, with sides and everything.
Yeah.
So, it's not, and that's basically all I told them, I said, this contractor had not built one here before. And I just said, we want them to look the same. Well, I thought maybe he had built some of the others, and he said, this is our first. And I didn't know that going into it, and I says, unfortunate, but we just want them all to be the same.
Yes.
So kinda left it that way.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Morrison's made the motion subject to either split block or brick on three's front and the two sides, uh, in addition to the other conditions that are in the, uh, in the, you just mentioned in your motion or your, your motion, Mr. Harris, which you closed, right?
Do we, do we, we gonna give them an option on the brick?
Either or, I would say.
Yeah, I don't see what difference it made.
Yeah, well, if they wanna go brick, I mean, they may be a little bit cheaper, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
But either or, that way kinda gives them that flexibility, I think.
Okay. I think the only brick one we have is one, what'd you say, Renee, was built?
Holly Bush, I think.
Holly Bush. Way, way back, this is one of the older ones, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Slay has closed the hearing, motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Tru, myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slay.
Yes, item O is, uh, it's that time of, of, of year again. Um, uh, this is our consideration of a potential action to authorize a continuation of our mosquito control services agreement with our chosen vendor, Vector Disease Control International, B D C I. And so, Mr. Chris New is here on behalf of Vector Control. Uh, and so we're, we're before you to let you know that we, it's, it's the time for the renewal. Uh, February, I believe February one of twenty fifteen, if I remember correctly, was, uh, was the first year that we entered into a contract with Vector Seas Control. Uh, they've had our mosquito control services ever since, uh, and so we have it on an annual contract. And, uh, we are, uh, right now, we are now wrapping up the contract here with Vector Seas Control. And we are at the same annual price that we started with them under the current contract, they've not gone up, uh, in pricing structure since. And so, uh, Mr. Do is here, uh, I, on behalf of, of the board, uh, just as an introductory, uh, Chris and I have talked about, um, a structure that, uh, that seems reasonable for the board to consider. Which is, if they've got pricing issues, I'm gonna let them discuss that momentarily, but what I would like to see us do is to put this on a, uh, on a format that will allow us to continue the services. Uh, and build in, uh, uh, methods by which both B D C I and the county can simply notify them that we are, uh, seeking other services or whatever. We can term the contract and so that we can get out of a situation where we're having to come back in front of you guys constantly. So, we're working on some issues that will allow us to lock down, uh, some pricing for a given period of time and to put us in a situation where we don't have to revisit this every year. That's just an option that, that came to mind, that can work for everybody. Uh, but if you have any questions, I'm gonna give Chris an opportunity to tell you about pricing, and if you have any questions, uh, he's here and, and we're here to try to help address those questions. Chris, would you mind?
Thanks, Drew, uh, thank y'all for having me here this morning, he's taken a lot of my, a lot of my thunder here, but, uh, but yeah, I did, did come to discuss our, uh, an, annual renewal. And, uh, wanted to ask for the board's consideration in a, uh, four percent, uh, price adjustment, um, in our, in our contract amount. And also, as he was talking about, uh, amending our contract language to include an auto renewal and then a, uh, annual CPI adjustment or two percent, whichever's lower, beginning in twenty twenty. Four years ago, uh, we came in here and started doing work for the county, uh, we came in with a, a really competitive prize, in my opinion, uh, to help, to, you know, to, to get, win the business, improve our worth, uh, to the county. And I feel like we've done that and, uh, through, uh, feedback we've gotten from residents, uh, feedback we've gotten from some of you. And, uh, you know, one of my key points, um, in going to get new business, um, I wanna, I wanna provide counties and municipalities with turnkey mosquito control options. Where we take all of the mosquito control burden away from the county or municipality, take all the service calls, all the complaints, and, uh, just take care of that where they're not, you know, burdened by that here in the county office and you're not getting those calls on your cell phone. But I feel like we've done that, um, over the past four years.
No, yeah.
Uh-oh.
I, I get phone calls and, you know, about things.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna stand up here and say, there are no excuses in the county, you're not getting any calls. And I feel like that we've taken a lot of that burden off of, off of the board and off of the offices here.
You get any calls?
I get them, but they handle, I mean, that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, it.
I mean, ones I get, I mean, y'all handle them, so I don't really consider them.
Any phone call, I got you, tell them quit whining about it, I don't bug spray and let's go forward.
Does that work?
Well, when you got football fields and, and schools where there's a couple of thousand people, you know, and, and they have reacted, uh, but it's been a reactive deal, uh, in, in the rural areas. Uh, the week after, you know, before we have a next home game.
Right.
Uh, I do not support an increase of four percent. Our, we don't pay, we didn't give our county employees a four percent raise, and they make a lot less than y'all do.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you, if we're gonna have an increase, I think we need to open it up for some bids. Yeah, I mean, that's only fair, cause when you come in, uh, several years ago, there wasn't as many companies doing what you're doing now either. You know, so there's more companies in this area who, I know I've been contacted a couple of times, uh, showing interest, so, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm not interested.
I'm happy with y'all, I'm happy with the response, but I'm not happy enough to give you a four percent raise and then hit another two percent next year. I mean, that'd be six percent about in the next thirteen months.
Right, well, I've just got two other things I wanted to add.
It's gonna get worse, huh?
Sir.
It's gonna get worse, huh?
No, 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 no more, we're clear, that's something you should be proud of, that I'm proud of as well. Um, four years ago, when we came into the county, uh, we had hired several seasonal employees, and two of our seasonal employees that we've hired that live here in the county, we promoted to full-time employees. Uh, one of them actually manages our contract now, and he also manages all of our accounts here in central Mississippi. Uh, the other one services accounts all over the country now, still based here out of Pila Hachi, and he actually won our, uh, employee of the year award at our annual Christmas party in December. Something that I'm proud of, something I think the board should be proud of here. And again, you know, I, I feel like we've been here, uh, four years, going into our fifth year, uh, we, we've proven our worth, we've brought a considerable savings to the county from what it was in-house. I don't know that exact number, but I'm willing to bet that it, that it's pretty considerable. You know, no price increase since then, uh, I just feel like with our commitment to the county, uh, the county's, you know, continual commercial and residential growth, I don't think that this, this request is out of line. And I, I don't think there's a lot of other vendors that you've had over that time period that aren't seeing some type of, uh, annual price increase, so I'd just like your consideration in that.
Mr. Slay, in the event the board decides to open this up for bids, again, what options in our contract allow them to continue on a month-to-month or some short period of time until, so we're gonna be without coverage and this?
We've, we've got, we've got four months.
The, the contract isn't just a paid, uh, any sort of arrangement outside, obviously, B D C I's voluntary agreement to, to, uh, some sort of temporary amendment to, to the contract language. It just simply covers an annual requirement. Um, at, at that point, we would be in a no man's land, uh, and need to, and to work with them. I, I, my assumption would be that if you guys decide to go R F D, uh, then we'll have to enter into discussions with B D C I for whatever the arrangement's gonna be from February one until you guys make a decision. I mean, that would be, um, the, the numbers, I don't know if they mean anything to you, I mean, we, the, the, uh, the, the current number on annual vector patrol is two hundred and twenty-one thousand for turnkey services. Uh, the, the increase would make that number two twenty-eight, eight hundred, uh, and so it's, I'm, I'm just trying to give you a number so that you can kinda get an idea of what, you know, what are we talking about here in terms of the cost? Uh, the, uh, it was actually, it was my suggestion to look at something like a CPI that would give all of us an opportunity, uh, to address future price increases. It wouldn't just be whatever, there'd be some way, uh, to, to calculate on our side for purposes of budgeting and other, uh, and look at it, to look at it. And, uh, my suggestion was that we do similar to what we do with waste management, which is to allow for the CPI increase on the contract price, but have a, but have an outside bar. And so a, a two percent, uh, ceiling on any annual increase, uh, would, would help us to establish a better budgeting and control. Uh, and so that was, that was the suggestion that was made there. Um, and it really just give us a, a better opportunity to control going forward. We entered it into the contract with B D, B D C I the way that we did initially because we were unfamiliar with, honestly, with turnkey vector control. We didn't know what we were gonna get, uh, and, and really uncertain as to how it was gonna go, because it had always been in panel of house. And, uh, so without any real clarity, uh, it, it didn't make any sense for us to go into some long-term arrangement. Uh, so the thought process was that after four years, now that we've seen the work and, and we've, uh, experienced what it means to have turnkey services, uh, maybe this would be the time to have this discussion looking forward to something more long-term. Anyway, that was the idea behind all of it, and so it would be two twenty-one to two twenty-eight. Um, and, you know, we, at this point, uh, in, in R F D, uh, we're gonna need, we're gonna need some time to structure that. Uh, we can't just whip out a proposal, uh, that is inclusive of everything we would need in vector control, uh, without getting our E O C guys involved. without getting our EOC guys involved and making sure that it covers everything across the waterfront that we want.
We're not inventing a wheel here. I mean, there's other count, we, I'm sure there's some things we can look at without doing all the research.
Right, right. It's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get an RFP back in front of you guys that y'all can approve.
I'm not for kicking them out the door. Let's negotiate this four percent. We didn't give our employees four percent.
Yeah.
We could, we could.
Excuse me if I might. Some of this has to do with the cost increase with the chemicals and stuff we have to buy. Those prices go up, so we have to adjust for that as well.
Yeah, I, it's, the way I'm looking at it, Steve, it's, it's basically, it's one percent that they have deferred for some, since inception. It's one percent over the length of the contract term that they've been here with us. That's the way I was anticipating. So essentially, instead of price increases from inception forward, starting with sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, these are basically one point three percent increases deferred until this. So it's, it's almost like a catch-up.
But you know, this is kinda like setting up a situation like we have with Waste Management. And, you know, and, and they're unique. And, and this is not as unique as Waste Management, you know? So like, when we do our spraying of our buildings or, or maintenance of our facilities, you know, we, we only do that on a couple of year basis, you know, and then opening up. So I'm not really wanting to.
It's a two-year deal. That's what, that's what we're talking about with this. We're just taking it so that it's, it's every two years instead of every single year having to come back and deal with this issue. Just go ahead and put us on a two-year cycle and allow for the, for the renewal to be auto, but capped at two years so that you guys are, are back in the game of making a decision on this every couple of years. That was kinda the idea behind that.
But I thought you were wanting to factor in an increase in there also.
Yeah, the CPI would be attenuated annually, just like it is with Waste Management. So it would be capped at two percent. But if, if Consumer Price Index was one point one, that's what the increase would be. So the max would be to.
Before I commit anything like that, I won't see what the open market says. I would, I'd be okay with a two percent right now. And then whatever the market shows, say one, or what the market shows at the end of the year. If you wanna go two, I don't have a problem meeting with them every year. But I think we're gonna cut some budgets at the end of this year for our budgeting on our own agencies. It's, but anyhow, I'm not getting into that.
I will say, I, I don't know the exact number that you were spending prior to us, but you could probably look at CPI increases for twenty years and not equal to what you were paying in vector control.
So you remember what we were paying? I, I don't know.
What we were doing, what we're doing now is, is. We were doing it within. Apples and oranges. Yeah. You know, it's not the same thing.
Cause they're treating with pellets and all. We were just spraying, weren't we?
Yeah.
That's all. We were doing spraying and maintaining trucks.
We had a few pellets. We had a few pellets special request.
Mostly just spraying?
Yeah, most of it was just spraying.
What was that cost? Do you remember?
Three hundred and something.
All right, I got one member of the board who wants to open a backup RFP. I got one that wants to negotiate what you, what's us three who will swing it one way and another one the other.
But what, my comments on Vector is every time I've called Brandon or your group, they've been, they've responded immediately to me. I mean, I, I don't think you can fix the mosquito problem at the reservoir with thirty-seven thousand acre lake. And then I'm getting record land, rainfall. I think that's because I got elected. So they could probably vote me out and fix the rain issue.
Communicate this group from the, you know, but.
Yeah, so I mean, so from my standpoint on Vector, they, they've been there every single time I've called or needed anything like that. I understand the prices go up and chemicals and all that. And I'm, I'm more aligned probably with Steve in saying, I'm, my fear is if we open up for RFP, we come back in and everything's at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and now we just went crazy.
Yeah, that's my only concern too.
But from that same point, I agree, they need some type of adjustment. I'm probably more lean to the two percent side of that initially, then we come back and look at it every year. I think it's something that needs to be looked at every year because we can't really control.
But you're not looking at anything if you're with the one company, though. You're not, you're not really looking at nothing.
Is it worth, is it worth four thousand dollars to go out to RFP?
I don't know, man.
It cost us more than four thousand to just bid it out.
Cause your eight thousand, seven thousand dollar increase right now is what they're asking for in a four percent deal. If you went it to two, you're talking about four thousand dollars on RFP and the time, and you don't know what you get. You might, it might come back at a hundred thousand. I don't know. But I'm just saying, you're really arguing over four to seven thousand dollars. And it's important. I agree with you on the same, cause we are gonna have to tighten down all of our county groups. Absolutely, so.
All right, so I'm sensing two votes in favor of two percent, one still at RFP. Mr. Morrison, it's your pleasure here.
Why don't you say?
You know what's kinda.
Yeah.
Um, I can live with the two percent. I, I, you know, I think that's fair.
I don't think we've heard our people say they're willing to live with two percent.
We're just discussing our side.
Maybe not, but if you can't, then we go to RFP.
I'm gonna say, and, and I probably shouldn't say this. Most of this money that we spend is for fluff. When that truck goes down that road spraying this mosquito spray, it may deter mosquitoes for one hour in that area. And when it's gone and you don't smell it, neither do those mosquitoes. Uh, it does help for a few men around, like your sporting events and stuff like that. But we can get too crazy with. Uh, I'll go two percent. That's all.
I guess, I guess one thing that I look at, and I agree with what you're saying, Steve, once it, out there where we live and it goes, it's gone after the fact, after a little bit. But the one thing, if you don't spray and somebody gets west nile, then they come back and say, you, you, then you think, what if I had? You know, it just leaves that little, little gray area. I do know, actually, on my end of the road, it does seem to help. Cause when the, before they start spraying, they're getting pretty thick. And then they, when they start spraying on a regular basis, it does help. But I have to help my own self that I think the, the homeowners don't do. You can't control them up in your flower beds and up in your shrubs. I mean, that's, they're not gonna control them from the road there. You gotta do a little bit on your own. And I, and we do that some of our own too. So, but, but my one thing is that if, if someone, we have an outbreak west nile, then they can say, y'all.
In the spring and summer, if it's standing water, there's gonna be larvae in them. And the more water we have on the ground, there's gonna be more mosquitoes and more chances of people getting bit. And they can't put bait out everywhere.
I think there is a perception thing, though. If we don't do something, then the perception is.
I think, yeah, you're right. We do need to keep maintenance.
Not getting too far off, the, the truck spray you're talking about is a small part of what we do.
Right, I understand.
You're right. It is temporary.
That's the big thing that the people see.
That's what, that's what residency is, mosquito control, you're right. But it's the targeted surveillance and the service requests and the public education and stuff like that that we do that none of those components by themselves are gonna work. It's a, it's a combination of all that that, that gets together to form an integrated mosquito management program. And that's something that you have now that you did not have four years ago.
Well, and I do know that, I didn't know, I've got educated on mosquitoes. There's so many different varieties of mosquitoes that certain chemicals will and won't control. And I, I didn't know that, but I, I know y'all have educated me on that. So, and I do know you, you go out on some special cases, if we let you know ahead of time, you will spray. Unless they like, maybe if you're gonna have a gathering or a ballgame, you go out special and try to catch that. If we let you know ahead, and some of it may be our fault, we don't let you know ahead. But you do that. And the pellets, I know that there's been some special requests on some pools of water, and y'all handled that and never said a word. So, you know, we get a little, a little fluff out of it too.
All right, gentlemen, we're at a, we're at an impasse here. Y'all are at four percent. I think the majority of the board here is willing to go as high as two percent. Either we need to, y'all need to make a move here, or we need to table it, or let it.
I, I'm, I'm willing to go two percent, so two percent and then.
Revisit it at the end of the year.
Every year.
And it may be another two if inflation and cost of materials, whatever.
So the, the contract renewal that we're talking about is, it, the auto renewal and the CPI is not something that.
I don't, I don't have a problem with spending fifteen minutes doing this next year.
Understood. It would be similar to what we're talking about with the price adjustment of two percent for February one, twenty nineteen for the next year. And then we revisit it again prior to next February.
All right, so are we, Mr. Slay, you good with whatever you need to do to go move, move? Assuming we get a motion here and it approves?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I think Chris and I can work out the details of the contract language.
Do you wanna come bring it back on the thirty-first for approval or?
At this point, y'all need to say, here is what, here is the only thing we're willing to agree to so that it's clear in my mind what I'm dealing with. And then we can work, assuming that BDCI wants to move forward on that term, then we will work out the details of the contract.
Okay, with the two percent.
I think, I think we've.
The board, the board, do we need a mo, we need a motion?
We're gonna prove it now, yeah.
Yes, sir, so.
I mean, those, that, based on, based on Slay getting it worked out.
If, if y'all will allow me, just.
Need some direction?
Yeah, the motion would be that we are entering into a renewal of the vector control contract with BDCI for one year with a two per, two percent increase in the flat fee amount that we pay them. Good for one year. And as long as I'm satisfied with language and Chris is satisfied with the language, the board present would be authorized to execute the agreement.
And you, and you, yeah, I think we've kinda hashed it out, right? I'm okay.
I make the motion?
Make the motion of Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Slay, I think you're up next with appeal bond for Siemens versus Rankin County.
I think all we're doing on this particular agenda item is acknowledging that we have received.
So we won the case?
No, sir. This, this is simply, it's really, it's house cleaning. It's, it's Siemens' way of not having to file a separate appeal lawsuit for the twenty eighteen taxes, making the exact same arguments that they've made for fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Do you know where they are in that lawsuit?
Yes, sir. There, there is a trial setting for later this year. And I have one of the items that I'm gonna have to get you to help me with before we get too far that relates to that. It's another small house cleaning matter. But that, that is set for trial. I, I don't have the date off the top of my head. I apologize. But it's this year, trial for trial. So we're simply acknowledging receipt of an appeal bond. What that means is that they have provided evidence that they stand good to pay the taxes if they lose the lawsuit.
I, I make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Do you wanna conclude your other house cleaning item at this time?
Uh, if, if you'll allow me, yes. It doesn't have to be a part of this motion.
All right, with the motion of Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, we're gonna be adding something to the agenda then. I'll take it.
If you, if you don't mind, Mr. President, the, the agenda item to add will be to acknowledge receipt of, of a notice letter from the Taggart Ryans and Graham Law Firm notifying us that our attorney on the Siemens lawsuit case, Mr. James L. Martin, is, is leaving the Taggart Ryans Law Firm and is opening up his own law practice. And so we've gotten a notice on that, and I'm gonna need you guys to act on that. So that's the, the matter that's gonna be added.
I make that motion. We add that to the agenda for some unknown reason. But is there a second? Second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. I'll make the motion. And the reason we are approving that is separate the contract to get the contractual obligations separated.
Actually, the, the case stays with the law firm unless the client instructs the law firm that the case is to go with the departing lawyer. And so Mr. Martin was selected by your tax assessor, Mr. Solomon, as the, one of the foremost experts on tax deals in the state. And I mentioned to John, Jim is opening up his own place. And, and obviously, we want the case to go with Mr. Martin. He's who we hired.
We wanna start over again.
What we'll be doing is instructing the board attorney to execute the notice document that we got from Taggart Ryans, telling them to send our file, Rankin, Siemens v. Rankin County, to Mr. Martin for further handling and release them from any, any obligation.
So we need to add that to the.
It's already been added, so you guys are simply offering.
That's part of that motion to add it. Now, it's part of the motion to approve. I make the motion to approve that. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
We have the, we have the letter for that to, to take place, Mr. Morrison.
All right, Gunner Road and, uh, our, our, whatever.
Yeah, I, I asked if this would be put under my section because I wanna give you guys a quick explanation. This is Gunner Road Extension. The board has not authorized receipt of any or acquisition of any right-of-way on that project. Obviously, it's premature. This, I, I didn't want you to confuse as to why you would be paying integrated right-of-way services on Gunner Road Extension. This was simply to get acknowledgements and approvals out to the landowners so that that initial surveying activity, not acquisition of right-of-way, but actually defining the right-of-way by way of survey, they helped us get landowner authorization letters and approvals. So that's what this is paying.
All right, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted some clarity on it. That this is our first step into the Gunner Road Extension project, is that right?
It's actually premature before that. Uh, this is, this is an aspect of the initial design of that project that's in the engineering.
Design, where it's going.
All right, so where are we at on discussion of the funding of the whole thing?
I think we're waiting on a decision to be made with respect to the Emergency Road and Bridge Repair Fund that, that happened, I guess, DAP, responsible for that currently. And, and also, there is the MPO process where we've made applications. We're waiting to hear from that. I think.
MPO, MPO won't be until mid-February and we'll find out.
But I mean, I know we talked about, I brought it up in December on where the funding's coming from. And I've, I've never really been brought back into the.
Land is coming, December, January thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
To discuss various options and to have a more in-depth discussion, taking certain budget considerations.
On how we're gonna pay for it.
Very proud of it.
I'm interested in your question.
Listen to.
Yeah. All right, so we, we're done. Mr. Snow, we're moving on to R. Did we take care of you?
We need to vote on that.
Y'all approve?
Do we approve it? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Slay.
Okay, item R is a board order that relocates our Rankin County precinct two nineteen, which is Route Reservoir West from the River of Life Church at one oh one Parkway Road to Lakeside Presbyterian Church at two oh seven oh Spillway Road. Um, effective January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, authority.
Another church changer.
River of Life Church, county, uh, backed before the November election and agreed to, because they'd already executed contract, again, you, uh, agreed to continue to allow for their facilities to be used as a precinct up to the end of the year. So this is the action to relocate the polling place for Reservoir West two nineteen from River of Life Church, who no longer wishes to serve its precinct location, to Lakeside. It's actually, uh, this is a much better location for this precinct.
It's bigger.
The parking is so much better here. Uh, and the facilities are, quite honestly, they're, they're more easy to locate. They're easier to get in and out of.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Ms. Oster.
Thank you. The first thing I have this morning is authority to pay JH&amp;H Architects for architectural services in the amount of twenty-six thousand five twenty-eight. And that is for services in connection with the Canine Facility and authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by myself. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Discussion, yes.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. What, is this the same one we were talking about?
This, for Canine Facility? This is for their, their renderings, their drawings, their multiple drawings that they have done.
They've already done this stuff. They've already been done.
Right, they've already been done. This is for their, their portion of it.
Okay, so this.
They, they have instructions to not spend any more money.
This is, they've already done this. This is like the doors out, dogs out the gate on this.
Just making sure this wasn't lingering into that.
Hell, we could've built the doghouse for that.
We have special dogs in this county that require top-level care. All right, there's been a motion of a second. All in favor, say aye.
Put that special metal building right there.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Oster.
Second item is request approval to increase the mileage reimbursement rate to fifty-eight cents per mile for travel in private vehicles, and that's according to Miss, State of Mississippi Department of Finance. And that's according to the State of Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration. It would be effective as of January the 1st, 2019.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. C, please, ma'am.
This is the award of our bank bid for our bank depository pursuant to Code 27-105-305. And it will be awarded to Bank Plus is the county primary depository for a two-year term ending December the 31st of 2020.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. D, please, ma'am.
Approval for Rankin County to accept lease purchase financing agreement from Trustmark National Bank for the purchase of one new Cat 312 milling machine at an interest rate of 3.17 and authority to execute the documents.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, Mr. Gaines, it's up to you on the next one.
You got to leave, too?
She's got him out. I'll just abstain. I'll just abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I can, okay. The next one is acceptance of the Supreme Court Administrative Order on December the 6th, 2018, appointing family master David L. Morrow, Jr. for services beginning January the 1st of 2019 through June the 30th of 2019. And compensate said family master at a salary of $2,500 per month. Order entered by the Chancery Court on December 13th.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All vote for, yes.
Aye.
Any against, say no.
How does abstain?
Daniel abstains. Motion passes. Bob, come back in.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business to discuss, Ms. Oster?
Nothing under my section. Do you have anything? You took care of yours.
Anything, gentlemen, y'all have feelings?
I just want to say one thing that come our next meeting, which is January 31st, Craig, and Buster, Tim, Mike, I want us to have either we're on go to finish Oak Grove or we're calling the bond.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I'm with you, bud.
Yeah, I'm with you, too.
It's a disaster.
I want the record to reflect that my no vote in paying that check is no reflection on Jay or the people in that community, it's on the contractor.
Absolutely.
Jay has done everything possible to make their lives better or to try to fix this, and he has not gotten cooperation with this contractor. And I'm upset with the contractor, not Jay or the people out there.
I agree with that.
100%. Well, it ain't really me, it's all of us, you know?
I mean, we voted against it.
Jay is the target on the board for this, and he doesn't deserve it.
No, I just support it because that's what he needed.
But this time, he does not. A lot of times, he does deserve it, but not this time.
It's frustrating to be where I sit in this, knowing that the options that are available to deal with this, especially if you ramp it up, the litigation, are simply going to delay the outcome that much farther than trying to get a cooperative voluntary resolution. And so, any process that we begin, and this is not, this is simply instructive so you guys understand what the thought process is. If we can work it out with the contractor and get him to voluntarily do what he needs to do, we're going to be so much better off than if we try to litigate. The problem with litigation is that both sides get opportunities to effectively delay it. And my concern is that even if we call the bond, there will be an eruption of litigation that's going to delay the completion of this project for quite a long time. And there won't be a way to resolve that because it will be in litigation.
Which is the same place we're at right now.
Very frustrating.
Yeah, I know.
So...
But hopefully, within two weeks, we should know by giving them a number of days that he wants whether he's going to finish doing the work or not, you know, so...
We're going to do our best to try to work it out amicably, as amicably as we can. They'd be able to allow us to do that.
Well, it sure put me in a bad mood. Sorry about that vector control.
Anything else on upriver? Anything on the balance sheet or whatever this is, income expense or fund balance? I guess, was this a fund balance thing? Do y'all have questions? Any others? Anything else for discussion? Is there a need to go with executives? Oh, or... I entertain a motion to discuss the need for executives, Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. The need would be?
Personnel.
For what?
Hey, and I want to, I need also on personnel, I got something to do.
Any litigation here, Mr. Slay? For going the need for personnel, motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Hi, sir?
Yeah.
Pretty good.